Remember that reclaim. And then I need to. Remember you have to put down the bill? Reclaim. Or is it going to request Ken to do it?
I don't think it is. To do it.
He has to do it? Okay. Um, he's on with his.
How about Sonny and?
Yeah, Sonny?
Sonny and Marina. Marina and Sonny should be. Still on the phone.
Sonny is on the phone.
Want to get it back on?
There's Sonny right there.
Yes, he is.
Is he still here?
Yes.
All righty.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to return the second session.
Motion to return.
Second. There's a motion in a second to return from the second session. I'm in favor. Okay, uh, at this time I'm going to, uh, establish for the record, uh, Councilman Davina Reyes has been with us since seven oh one and, uh, Mayor Mary Moore, uh, joined the meeting at seven nineteen. I'll turn it over to Mary.
I have six in open session, um, six eight discussing hospital action regarding leader and most issues with the Johnson Patrol Corporation performance contract. This is an action item we will discuss, and then we will entertain a motion to, uh, address this item.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Right.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, Councilman?
Hold on, sorry.
Salvia.
He's still with time?
Power on. Bluetooth pairing.
Seven fifty-seven.
Bluetooth connected.
Is there any further discussion? If not, we need to entertain a motion to address six eight please.
May I like to make a motion? To say that we direct our city attorney to write a demand letter on the performance of the leader insisted, uh, to Johnson Patrol Incorporated.
May I have a second?
I'm in favor by yay?
Yay.
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 Motion carries in analysis. Okay, we want to, oh, business. A discussion and hospital action regarding resolution number two zero two zero dash zero five, that's your two, to approve an increase in the monthly contribution to the Texas Emergency Service Retirement System system on behalf of the Pearsall Fire Volunteer Fire Department. This is a previously tableed item. Therefore, we intend to create a motion to adjourn please.
Motion to adjourn.
And the second?
Second.
I'm in favor. Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor Council, in fact, so fine as the, uh, the minutes from this, uh, they've backed some, some time as far as the council's reticent increases for the volunteer department. So, uh, if you're flustered here, there are any questions you may have as far as increases. This is an item that came, uh, that came to all of us last council week.
So what question I had, uh, was the effective date. We passed, I know we entertained this last name, right, for the ninety dollars, and, uh, the effective date goes back to January at that point as well?
Yes, I mean, yeah, so we can go get the whole year. It, it, it goes, uh, from January to December, so we'll go back, start, you know, from the January and it will be some.
So that's what we did last, yes, yes, you're right.
Yes.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, fine, we, um, entertain a motion to address eight, seven, eight please.
May I make a motion?
First eight.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve of, which is twenty twenty zero five oh two, two hundred three in the monthly contribution to the Texas Emergency Service Retirement System on behalf of the Pearsall Volunteer Fire Department.
I have that. There's a motion in table. I'm in favor. Yes, yay?
Yay.
I vote for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries in analysis. I have eight eight. Discuss and consider resolution. No, we already did this one. Okay, so what about eight D? This is where we start? Okay, discussing, consider authorizing city manager to enter into agreement with Young Professional Resources Engineering, On Call Engineering and Surveying Services. That's an item. We take a motion, please, discuss.
Motion. Second.
I'm in favor.
Right.
All righty.
Oh, Mary, Mary Council, uh, this item is, uh, actually, we have both engineering firms today that we've, uh, again, as a council, we, we went through a pretty extensive process to, to select, uh, some, some engineering firms for the, for the city. Uh, first firm, yours, I don't know if it's the street direction here, but both firms are here. Um, they're, they're from San Antonio area, and so we're, we're pleased to have them tonight, and so we're asking for the council to consider an agreement and, and having them forward with any te- any assignments or tasks, what we will use in the assigned task orders, uh, to, uh, to move forward with any projects to demand in the future. So I don't know if, if, uh, can you give us some time? Mr. Young is here to introduce himself. If you have any questions, I'm sure he'll be more than happy to answer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Leonard Young. I'm the president and owner of Young Professional Resources. My champion here is Mr. Jaime Noriega. Uh, background is Noriega is a licensed professional engineer. Uh, he's been with my farm for, for eight years. Uh, Jaime's experience, uh, not only working with municipal, but he brings me experience in working for private sector developers. My experience is I'm a licensed professional engineer. I've been practicing the engineer for thirty-five years. Uh, before I started my company, uh, I was, uh, worked with City of San Antonio. I was in charge of the streets and drains for the entire city. Uh, I had some experience working for Texas Department early on in my career. Uh, my last involvement, I worked with San Antonio Water System. I was the chief operating officer, the vice president engineer, and served, uh, two times as the interim CEO for San Antonio Water System. Uh, I opened my farm fifteen years ago, uh, in Windcrest, Texas. We say San Antonio, but actually it's Windcrest, Texas, is where my farm and that's where I live. Our experience is we've worked a lot of growth cities. We do work the city of San Antonio, but the city of Converse is one of our farms. We're the city engineer for them. We're city engineer for the city of Windcrest, Texas. Uh, we're the engineer for the, uh, Barrett County Water Control Improvement District, the water company for the city of Windcrest. Uh, we're honored that we were selected. We're, we're honored that, that, that you all selected us to be, uh, an engineering firm result. Uh, I think you'll find that one of the things that we do, uh, my experience is not just working with cities. I understand, uh, the issues that you have to deal with. I understand your finances. I understand your, your policy. I grew up in a small community, and so I have a lot of experiences that I think that'll be very valuable, uh, to you all. So again, we want to bring the city of Pearsall and Mr. Reyes and staff who select us to look forward to working for them.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the council?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what percentage of the project, any project, uh, do, uh, you feed based on?
I didn't understand.
What, you're feeding for services? Uh, normally what percentage of the project is that?
Well, you know, typically, uh, the rates for engineering farmers, uh, what we do is we, we have an hourly rate, and then we look at the project and scope of the work, and then we develop a fee, negotiate, negotiate as to the plan. So, uh, some will be ten percent, some will be six percent, or some will be fifteen percent depending on the complexity of the project. But each project is negotiated, uh, at a rate that's. And I, I think, and I, I need to ask this, and a lot of the first time we, we have a plan, uh, what makes us a little bit different? Um, when, when you do a project, you get me, I bring thirty-five years in, uh, you don't get a junior engineer who's going to spend hours and hours trying to resolve something. I have, have that experience. So, uh, my rates are no different than any other engineering firm as far as hourly rates. It's all the same, uh, but it's a matter of how quickly you can get it done. Uh, themes that may take other farms, uh, weeks to do, uh, we can do it a lot faster, so that, that's what you get in our farm.
Yes, Councilwoman?
I have a question. Uh, how often do you, uh, when you're, uh, when there's a project going on, um, how often do you have your director of construction on, you know, on the project observing the?
Well, and again, that, as we look at the project, each project requires a different level of attention. So there, there are some projects that, that we're out, uh, forty hours a week. There are other projects, uh, we only have to be there when they're doing critical elements, and what that does is allow the, the cost of the project to go down. So we look at each project and establish the amount of time that we need to be there, or what points in time we need to be there.
Thank you.
Is this hard?
Excuse me?
This is hard.
Oh, that's, yes, I can, so I'll make sure we read.
Like I said, we look forward to working.
We look forward to working, y'all. Thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we need to, can I take a motion? To address eight D?
I have a motion. I want to know that the city manager to enter into agreement with Young Professional Services, YPR, Engineering, On Call Engineering and Surveying Services.
There's a motion on the table, second. I'm in favor.
I vote yes.
Okay. Councilman Salvia? Are you still present? You just passed it because it's. Yeah, I'm gonna go, okay. So motion carries in analysis. All righty. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you give my vote?
Yes.
Yes, Mia?
Thank you.
Eight C? Discussing, considering authorizing city manager to enter into agreement with CD now, Smith Engineering for On Call Engineering and Surveying Services. Motion to discuss. Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mayor Council, uh, the other, the other firms here, uh, uh, here with us is Avila, Canadian Smith, uh, her name is Stacy Barna, and we're asking for approval of this, of this ten dollar. They entered an agreement with them. Stacy is from around Austin, although she can work. With, uh, they act off.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mary Hansen. Um, my name is Stacy Barna from City of Smith. I am out of the Austin office. Um, I'm supporting about one hundred and fifty engineers and scientists in the state of Texas, so we are looking at a larger firm. They're a national firm, so, um, we go to that, how many people overall, um, as far as if we have to reach for specific specialties that we need to do. Um, we're excited to be here and, um, happy to be chosen to assist the city of Pearsall, um, with upcoming water and wastewater projects. A little bit about my background personally. I was actually in the public sector for about twenty years, so my background has been planning and financing projects. I used to work for the Texas Water Development Board for about six years. Um, prior to that, I worked in the state of Ohio, so I used to oversee the, um, funding for, for, for communities. And so, um, where I might be helpful, I will help to oversee projects with the engineers, but at the same time, I will also, uh, work with the water development board for any of the funding that might be needed, to make sure I can look for any grants, loan forgiveness, um, anything that will help the city be able to do more projects for less money. Um, so it's better, a better deal for the city in the long run. Um, let's see. Also, I do work locally with the city of Petula. Worked with them for several years, um, and I work with Laredo, and I'm starting to do some work with Brownsville, so even though I'm not in Austin, I do play a bit of work in, in Southern Texas. Um, but between our staff and, and Austin, we'll be able to support the city. At the same time, if, if we need to reach into other offices, I'm, I'm able to do that to make sure we can get any, leave the projects, um, as quickly as we can. Um, and to answer one of the previous questions, as far as the engineering fees, it would be very similar, um, just in case you were going to ask that again. Ten, fifteen percent is normal, but we see, but it depends on the project. If we're looking at also doing funding, um, planning documents, sometimes for water development board, we have to additional planning documents with, uh, engineering fees of the unicorn, um, design, and then if there's construction administration or construction management of a project. So that's, that's very similar to, um, what was mentioned earlier.
Question, Council? Okay, thank you very much. So, you know, for the question we need to hear, to the motion to discuss eight. C.
Make a motion. Then we authorize our city manager to enter into agreement with CD and Smith Engineering for On Call Engineering and Surveying Services. Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Trevino?
Davina?
Yep.
Are you in agreement? Under it. Were you able to hear?
I'm going in and out.
Were you able to hear it?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so motion carries.
I can't hear you. I can't hear. I'm, it's far back.
Okay, so motion carries. You can't talk back, you can't hear.
Here's some cards, Council.
There's a connectivity problem here.
And Melissa's Barna will get you some cards, then, or she's going to show the card to.
All right.
Congratulations, Sam.
Pretty gorgeous work there.
Congratulations, thank you.
You got some other.
Thank you. Thank you, we got to thank you. All right, we move it on to eight D. Discussing, considering authorizing the city manager to issue a request for qualification for property appraisal services for the city of Pearsall. Can I take a motion to discuss, please? Motion to discuss. May I have a second?
Second.
On your. Yes, sir.
Mayor Council, uh, some meetings back, I think once it was like two or three meetings back, uh, uh, the, uh, request to, to, uh, seek, um, somebody, a group that maybe will do appraisal for the city of Pearsall. Uh, so what this is, is a request for qualifications for appraisal services. Now, with this, this group, whoever, or groups, whoever's hired to do this, what they'll be doing is, is any property we wish to sell in the futures, they will come in and do an appraisal on the property. Same thing would be if we were to acquire a property. I did put some other language into RFQ to include, uh, they would be allowed also to secure right of way. So whenever you secure right of way adjustments, things of that sort, you have to pay for that. They will come in and do, uh, appraisal on the property if we want to, if we ever, if we want to do that in the future. Uh, I do, I am thinking of some projects in short that I can say, probably eventually I'm going to have to use this, this type of service, uh, whether, again, whether it be to sell or to, or to buy property right of way. So I'm asking the council to allow us to move forward with this request for qualifications. We'll read it back to you with, once we've selected a group, and then, um, then move forward, then, then request the council to have, as far as, as far as the service.
Okay, any questions, Council? So if not, can I take a motion for eight D, please?
May I move it up?
Yes, sir.
The motion that we authorize the manager to, uh, issue a request for qualifications for property appraisal, uh, services for the city of Pearsall.
Motion on the table. May I have a second, please? Second. On, on the favor? Yay?
Yay.
Aye.
Yay.
Okay, motion carries in analysis. Moving on to eight E. Discussing, formulate a standard process for, um, following the vacant council seat of unifying term and system with the agreement to city charter. Entertain a motion to discuss, please?
Motion.
Second. I'm in favor.
Yay.
Motion carries.
Mayor Council, this item was a request, I believe, by the mayor to put that along the agenda. This item on the agenda. All we did, what I did is staff, I had staff put in the section, um, section of our charter that speaks to vacancies. So again, this is up for discussion. I don't believe it's an action item, but it is something that the council wants to move forward. Just, we just asked for some direction of how you would like this to proceed. Let the city attorney know.
So we have in our, um, section three point zero nine vacancies. However, what we have in the chart is kind of inconsistent with what we're following now. So we just need to establish guidelines of what we need to do for the future. However, it has to still, has, it should not conflict with what's already been voted by the citizens that's within the charter. So that's where we are. Um, so if, if there is, of course, we can't alter this because this has to be, uh, any alteration of the charter has to be voted on by the citizens of Pearsall. So, right now, we need to establish, are we going to go by three point zero nine, or? What other options you guys want to entertain?
I, I, I think we need to, we need to follow three point oh nine, but we need to establish a process for filling the vacancy. I mean, this is, this is says we shall fill the vacancy.
It doesn't specifically tell us how.
It doesn't tell us what process to use. So we've, we've done, we've done it a couple of ways for the past few years, and so we need to establish one way to do the things, and, um, and, and that's really what we should do. But I think it, it, it is going to be consistent with the charter, if we align. What I, what I was thinking is that, is that since, uh, we've, we've mostly, the last five years, when there is a vacancy, we call for, uh, uh, applications, and then we, uh, interview respective candidates, and then we've, uh, either made a motion to, to, uh, appoint someone, or call for further applications. And, and that's generally what we've done in the last five years. Of course, this, this, these past two, both vacancies haven't been handled that way. Uh, only one was handled that way, and we need to establish a consistent process. So if we're not in violation of the charter, and, and we, we shall appoint as our fill the vacancies as this charter says. But th- those are my opinions. Does anybody else have anything else, or?
You have a question, Councilman? Yes, sir.
Yes, my opinion is that, so there's some people in Pearsall that have different organizations, and they're quickly filed off to, uh, uh, junctions if they need for a fact that we're implementing actions in the charter. And up to now, I have not seen one single group put in a junction against the city of Pearsall, against us, for not following the home charter. My view is that I totally disagree with the comments we made. I think that we are following the charter, just because they don't have the vote to put the person that they want to put in. This is me when I'm following the charter. Okay, but so I, but I think that this is a me situation because we have the charter that we go by. And once again, I stress out, if there's people out there, there's people out there, if they want to file lawsuits, they're going to file lawsuits. What they do in court, get them in. And that's exactly what, uh, I talked to the city attorney about, and he disagrees with some of the stuff that some other commissioners are saying. And he said, why would they call, call a lawsuit? And that's exactly why, file a lawsuit. This, it will happen, but they have to file a lawsuit because, I have to say, everybody's entitled to their own opinions. You can't deny this, but follow the charter. Just because they don't have the vote to put the people that they want, they, they will find out, and that's how quick.
Well, in, in, in response to that, sir, I don't, I don't work that way. I don't, I don't depend on anyone here or anyone out there for anything. And so the only thing I'm referring to is that we fill a vacancy according to the charter, as our attorney said, we shall do it. And we call for applications. In the past, when we did not agree to fill a vacancy, we continued to call for applications. All I'm asking now is, what is the council going to do as a standard process? That's it.
Well, what I have to say about that is this. That's me for two weeks ago, voted on this, the corner, and then I voted, okay? Yeah, give me a turn. See him now, okay? And Mary, you stay for the record right now, we're a home new charter, okay? New charter, or soon to see the order of the resolution we have. For good the form that we did vote it on, that can go over. Tell me, it's going to go over. If y'all want to try to use it on some council members, without due respect, it's going to go over. If that person calls a lawsuit, person will be right back in. Because that the form has no meaning because we have a home new charter that we go by. Once again, that's best for the record now. So just because the people don't get it the way, doesn't mean that we're in violation of the charter. But I got to say.
Well, it's up to the council to see whether we want a consistent process or we want to play yo-yo with, uh, appointing of, of, uh, councils, empty councils seats.
So right now, we're just trying to establish a process. We're not voting anybody in. We're trying to establish a process of how to fill vacancies. So, um, do you guys want to go with the applications, interview candidates, appoint? And if you don't, um, agree upon appointee, you call for more applications. So that is the process that we've utilized, that we have a different alternate process that you want to present by, that's fine. Uh, but you need some kind of systematic way of filling vacancies, which it has nothing to do with, um, trying to put anybody in term. We're just trying to establish a process for the future. That was my process, so.
Let's process how I have to offer because that's the most consistent way we've done things the last five years. If anybody has an additional, uh, in addition to the process or any changes or whatever, we need to know what, what, what council would like to do. We just need to establish some.
It's not consistent. So I'm gonna call for a motion to, to, um.
That's a non-action item.
That's a, that's a non-action.
Oh, it's just discussion.
It's non-action.
Action. Okay, so we will address the side of the.
Mayor, council, on that end, whatever direction, we just want to make clear whatever that may be. Um, however, who wants to come back, whatever form, just let us know.
Okay. So then moving on to item F, discuss and consider authorizing the city manager to get into and execute the contract with Hispanic heritage festival coordinator. Is that an item? Let's entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, council, on page fifty-seven of your packet. Uh, you see, the who we included was the, was the proposal for the Hispanic heritage. Uh, Mr. Mortimer, entertaining was, was selected as the, as the group that will lead this as far as the event coordinator services. Uh, I believe we try, did you get hold of Chris?
Do you just want me to?
Yeah, he, he, he's, I think he's, he can be on the call. Um, if the council would like to speak to him, we just need some direction. I think we, the council, the last time we tried to maintain this, when we, they, they pulled the win until June, around in June. Um, so we just need some direction from the council. Uh, one, whether we wanna have this made or not. Uh, and what else? I think Mr. Mortimer, I'd say he's on the call. Do you have any questions? Um, and what, what y'all, what, what y'all wanna do as far as?
Is he on the phone?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question.
Can you hear me, Hopper?
Uh, very little, a very little.
Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir.
The councilman, on this, uh, this fest, I'm doing good, sir, thank you. All right, this festival, have we proceed with it? Uh, uh, have you given some thought as to the ground, uh, terms of what we might be facing with the COVID nineteen? Or what are, what are, what are we thinking at this point?
At this point, this is what I, I, I strongly feel myself, uh, I don't know if y'all wanna do with this. I feel that, uh, if we are not in any way clear, uh, you know, capacity restrictions or anything like that by August. Uh, keep in mind that, uh, last year, I was given about seven weeks to, uh, put this project together, which I, I feel that we successfully did. Uh, I personally feel, uh, that if we are not in, you know, clear of any capacity restrictions by that time, then I, I feel that we should just reschedule for next year. Uh, and, and what brings me to that conclusion, uh, councilman, is that, uh, is being that this is, uh, both, you know, hot funds, uh, and being that the money needs to attract our out-of-towners and, and kind of, you know, get our, our, they have time to come and stay at our hotels, you know, uh, visit our town, stay overnight, uh, spend money at our restaurants, and, you know, fire gas. For, uh, then I, I feel that we should reschedule for, for next year. Uh, I know that it's still up in the air, you know, with everything, with everything still opening up, and, you know, and I know next month, uh, everything goes to seventy-five percent and restaurants go to a hundred percent. Uh, I would, with, with whatever y'all decide to do. Uh, I know, you know, I, I know safety and, and, you know, the health of all of our community and, and especially our community, yeah, everybody, uh, is, is a big concern. Uh, but at this point, I, I'm a health person, so whatever you all, uh, as a council and as a city agree to do, I, I can all one hundred for that. But as far as I'm concerned, if we were to move forward, if we are not clear with any capacity restriction, whatever, then, then I feel that we should just reschedule for, for next year.
So, so would you need to commit any funds to any group or any, any one, uh, people at that date of August?
Absolutely not, Mr. Mortimer. What I, what I will tell you, then, what I will say to you and, and to everyone else, uh, like I said, uh, last year, I was given about seven weeks to, uh, to take care of the project. And like I said, I think we, we successfully did. So I, I would not, I would rather not send out any money to anyone at this point. Uh, it can all be done by August. Uh, so, I, we move forward great. I, I honestly think that, uh, things are getting better. Uh, but as, as far as sending out any money right now, I, I prefer not to, uh, well, resonate because I've seen some other municipalities that, uh, did that and they lost some money. Uh, contract reasons and stuff like that. So if, if y'all decide to move forward, uh, I, I feel that, you know, we'll definitely, for sure, know the first week of August. And, and people were at, everybody's buying the first week of August. We'll have to definitely make a safe, a certain decision on, you know, whether we, we go forward or not. But as far as to commit with any money, right now, I, 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 we still have a little bit of time.
Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry, uh, the term is that, uh, I'm off for the project, uh, we were talking about the one started last year. We wanted to succeed it and then add an event. Because of such a different setting we were in, I think that I don't wanna cancel the project. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna postpone it to August, by, uh, Mortimer said, by August, is it, is it going or? Uh, and I think, once again, I'd be stressed out. So, uh, we gave him like ten days last time, sixty days, to get it done, and he did a great job. So I think that by August, uh, we'll find out for sure, you know, what this COVID nineteen is gonna do.
Okay, comments?
Postpone till August.
Postpone till August. Big hurry, come on.
But I don't wanna cancel it. I didn't wanna postpone.
We're gonna postpone it to soon until August, so, uh.
Yeah, that's, that's what it means that nothing, nothing for this year. I'm gonna postpone. If I may, I have a motion there.
Oh, I.
One second.
Real, real, real quick, Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, yes, sir. I, I, I don't know if, if it ended toward the, that part of the company, but I, I didn't hear what had happened, who said was the last minute, you know?
Mr. Sigobia is, uh, asking that we postpone till August. Uh, is that going to, uh, present any kind of situations for you in saying, uh, performances and, and, and other activities?
Uh, no, not, not really. I mean, I, I'm just looking at it as, uh, a capacity issue. If, if we're gonna be restricted, uh, by, you know, by the state, that we are not gonna be able to have, you know, capacities over a thousand, a thousand people, that kind of stuff, that, that I feel that, that, you know, it's, it's a waste of money. Uh, because the, the goal for this, this year was to have, you know, between, you know, the sixty-five. You know, we had zero to five thousand last year. And the goal for this year was, was to, to, you know, add additional thirty thousand. It's, the, the project is getting bigger and, and more will come. So that's what we have a question. No, uh, I mean, we could, we could go September, you know? Uh, uh, I mean, not September, but through July. Uh, but no, there's, there's not gonna be any, any, any issues with, with two months of, of, of the project being put together. That's what he does.
Okay.
Okay, okay, sir.
Got it, say that.
Ignore.
Okay, council, Sigobia, you can, uh, make your motion now. We made a motion, I didn't hear.
No, he hasn't.
You have a, you know.
Mayor, all that's been written is that we postpone the event to August, the first meeting in August, about twenty-twenty. Then by that time, we should have a court, uh, office of what we're gonna do with the event. I do not wanna cancel it. I wanna postpone.
You wanna postpone a decision?
That's my motion.
Postpone a decision.
Probably said it.
That's it? All right, there's a motion on the table.
And a second.
And a second?
Second, sir.
Second by, um, councilman, get an address. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Yay.
Yay? Okay, motion carries unanimously. So we're moving on to, um, G, discuss and consider ordinance number two zero two zero oh six oh four. Setting stop signs at the corner of that section. Setting a penalty for violation and repugnance in conflict. I'm trying to maintain a motion to discuss, please. On motion, to the chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Yay. Yes, sir.
Councilman, on the, council, please keep addressing, thank you, ladies. We're on time to do chief.
Uh, the, the ordinance just covers, uh, the study that we went over in the last meeting, which was for, for North Street Avenue.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, for me and your street. I believe you guys saw the plan and were in agreement with it. So this ordinance makes it, puts it into effect.
Ready. Any question, guys?
I have a question there. Yes, ma'am. I just want to, uh, uh, let Peter know that I appreciate, uh, work studies that you did. And, uh, the only thing that I do, uh, have is a problem with is that, uh, the stop signs on every street. That's why.
We can, we can, see, council.
That, that, uh, on one street. When I'm, I'm, got to be fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh, we put a stop sign, we put it every, every street.
Yes.
And, um, I, I've gotten called about that, you know, that, oh my gosh, why did y'all put stop signs on every street? You know, I put it down, just put a four-way stop sign on one side, and then a couple of streets down, another four-way stop sign. And I said, I'm having to stop, 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 stop. I said, well, I mean, I understand, you know, that people need to, uh, get adjusted, you know, to these streets as well, you know, because of the speeding and stuff and whatnot. But, um, that's, that's the only thing that I, that I, you know, look at, uh,
Can please say.
The red box where they're at. If, if there, like, you have a four-way stop already on Bernal and Medina. Uh, we don't need a stop sign on Poppy River and Medina because there's already another four-way stop over here on Medina and Apple.
Um, I'd have to look.
Right down.
The, the, Medina and Bernal is, is, is not a four-way. It's just a, it's just a two-way. It would, it would create a four-way there.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It, it would, okay, yeah, the one of or not, but then you have one over here on Medina and Poppy River. Which is right at the corner of my, my property and Poppy River. I mean, there's only one stop sign yet. Oh, okay, I see, I see. I thought they were putting a stop sign on, on this side, you know, nevermind. I think we're set. Okay, no, 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 that, that, that's just right. I'm looking at the whole different. No, 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 that, that's perfectly fine, believe me.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I said, I'm not, and I don't have my math in front of me, so I'm, I'm trying to picture it in my head, so. But yes, ma'am, okay?
Yeah, no, 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 you're, that's, that's fine, please.
The, Pecan Street, I, I, I do, uh, I, I, I've heard that also from some other cities.
Hey, wait me.
Uh, so, uh.
My love.
I, uh, I agree, I agree, uh, that, um, it, it can seem that way, uh, as, as, as several stop signs in a row. And I, honestly, I leave it up to you guys' judgment on that, uh, on how you guys want to, want to do that. So, uh.
They did also, um, I know I spoke to the charades about the one we hear on First Street as well. Uh, about the streetblocks.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. That, I think, uh, he, he's asked for a, a study on that street for a future meeting as well.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Can we get a motion to the rest of this place? For that approval of the, uh, words. Are you G? Entertain a motion, please?
I make a motion.
I'm ready.
That we approve ordinance number two zero two zero oh six oh four stating stop signs at the following intersections. Uh, setting a penalty for violations and repeating ordinances in conflict.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second, sir.
All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Yay.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously unanimously. A, H, discuss and consider Medina Street traffic study and proposed recommendation. I'm trying to please.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Uh, this is, uh, another study that, uh, you guys asked for, uh, the council asked for. Uh, on the Medina Street, again, it's a, it's a, it's a straightaway, goes all the way from fifteen eighty-one, uh, all the way through to the train tracks, uh, no stops, um, at all. So the only, the only remedy that, that, that we can really see that could possibly help, I mean, if you guys chose, it would be, uh, creating the four-way stop at, uh, gosh, is it, um?
Apple.
Apple?
Apple and Medina.
Right, Apple and Medina. There, there's already north and south stops there. We would just, we would just do the east and west stop. And then the other one would be on, this is, um.
Bernal and Medina.
Right. There you go. So that would, that would break it up into about two block increments. Uh, I believe in four two-block increments, getting, getting you all to the track. So at no point should a vehicle really be able to get up to any type of excessive speed without having to come back to a stop. Would be the, would be our idea on that.
So four ways for Bernal and Medina as well?
Yeah, so it would be two, you know?
Okay.
You go two blocks and get to that stop, go two blocks and get to the Apple stop, and then go two blocks and you're getting the, the train tracks. And so we think that you'd be, I think that would be. There you go, yeah. Yeah.
That sounds good.
And if you, you have the fact that there are seats in the map.
Is that a messy action item? We'll send orders back.
Okay, so this is, just for discussion, you'll bring back the ordinance for, to vote. All righty, discuss, we're mainly moving on to I, discuss and consider.
Mayor, that, that was an action item to, 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 to bring. Item H was a discuss, consider, Medina Street traffic study, vote recommendations. If you could just, uh, put on there.
Discuss, and then you bring it back to vote, right?
Discuss and consider, it's a discuss and, it's an action item we were asking. Is the, the, the vote recog, to approve vote recommendations, right? I'm bringing it back, make a motion.
Yes.
That we approve, uh, the vote recommendations as stated by Chief Salinas for Medina Street, on Medina Street Traffic Study.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Yay.
Could bring that back.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to, um, I. Discuss and consider memorial equipment policy for the city park. I'm trying to, can I motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Sir.
Mayor, council, this, this item was brought to the council some time back. Uh, and so what I've asked the city clerk to do is to pull, uh, the policy. So what we're asking, the council is to approve, is to approve this item, the policy. Again, it's a policy that dates back at least a year or two back. Uh, and so what that bill said, it said a policy for any type of, uh, tree or memorial-based donation. Uh, it's attached to it as a form that we require people to fill out. Then it talks about trees and benches that the council would allow at these parks. Uh, so it gives, it gives a layout, so, so what we've said. From what I gather, and again, I haven't done all the research on this, these benches are, are expensive. They're not too expensive. I think the city are out there, two hundred dollars each, you live in a farm. So, uh, so what we're looking at is, we're, we're asking the, uh, the, anybody that's interested in putting a bench or some sort of memory out there, take, take the bench, the city will turn it, will maintain it. We give them the location where the bench will be. Uh, and, and again, uh, the rules are pretty much set out. So again, this policy has never been approved, my knowledge. Uh, if y'all want any modifications before you approve it, welcome to do that. And the next time, I believe the people are out there, that the rest speaks to this, uh, I don't know, I believe, uh, uh, folks that are interested were, uh, just to put some sort of a bench out of the. folks that are interested were, uh, just to put some sort of a bench out at the, the Latino Park. And, uh, they're actually out, out there, so I just wanted to bring this up to the council with your approval and consideration. And then, then after that, we can address the, the item. The council, so...
What's, is there going to be some kind of a plaque or something on there as well?
That's, Chief, you know, probably, as far as the bench, um, what I understand, what I gather, is that there is, uh, a group or company that asks you to go over there and ask them what you want, and there'll be some sort of a plaque.
Is it being written or...
So, it, it is, again, if you look at it, it's, it's a pretty, I know that you're, you're just on the...
Uh, yeah, just real min, real minimal, uh, research on it, but, yeah, just, just saying that, uh, something like that with a small plaque being placed to the bench or to the trees, you know, or the, some sort of a plaque standing by the tree. Saying, you know, uh, this tree is in remembrance of, and, uh...
And according to this, again, with the, and I, again, I haven't done the, the research as far as cost. Bench includes the cost of, includes the cost purchased, the delivery, installation, the four components left. So that would include the cost of the bench, the trees are three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and you can see the description of, of the tree, if somebody wishes to, to plant a tree. So, anyway, if you'll have any questions, I, I, again, I don't know, uh, whenever this was drafted, what the intent of the policy was, but it sounds like the council wants to report to allow bench to this, would be the policy. Or this sort of memory, type of thing, this would be the policy.
Mr. Ray. Do you have a place, can't just come from that's...
That's all right.
That's required, just answer.
Okay. Yeah. Not, I believe, it's, uh, the, the benches will come from a group of, I gather that, but we can, we can still price those. We're estimating the cost, you know, uh, we'll, we'll do that and, and go from there, ask, ask. Any questions you may have, I don't know that I have the answers to, but I'll try to listen to this.
Do we have to go with those? Can we do a little more research or something to see if there's not anything, uh, in Texas, a little closer that, that it won't be so expensive?
I think I'll add, uh, councilperson, as long as it's something consistent. You can, you have the same, you know, same vendor parties that have the same parks. You can do something different, but you, you kind of keep the same with the storage bench. I, I would encourage you to, to have different bench, different bench looks. You want a standard, like, by assumption, uh, look, and a good look to, to, to the, uh, to the parks. So, so that's what I would, I would mean is, whatever is we go with, it has to be a threshold of a decent bench, and I don't know, not the...
I think if you, um, I've seen those memorialized benches in San Antonio, I'm not sure where they purchased them from. But, um, I'm sure we may can find a vendor in San, I mean, in Texas.
We, we can find somebody close, and I can look through some of the, uh, some of the groups that we go with, that, that, I honestly, again, I haven't done the research to see if this was a true price, if this was a price that at least the former, former administration may have come up with, but I, I don't know. I don't know.
All righty, um, so I guess we're tabled, like, until we do a little more investigation to find out.
I, I bet we can table it, I, I think, I think the, the group that, that's out there, uh, again, for the next hour, just gonna want to have, uh, there is an action item for that to, to offer that, uh, more, or those, uh, I guess, general, general skills to be there, so, um, we can, we can table that and...
I think the only thing to question is the price of the bench.
Yeah.
Otherwise, uh, everything that's here suggests that, uh, anyone who wants to memorialize, uh, tree planting or bench can, can do so.
Correct.
So I, I think we can go ahead and establish this, this, as a guideline, as a guidelines.
And they have still...
And it's still a price check to make it as affordable as possible to the donor.
Yeah, we can negotiate the price, uh, the price of the...
Okay. Any other?
Mary, I would, I would, uh...
What did you say?
Yeah, comment.
Yes, sir.
It's, uh, I don't think it's fair for us to vote on this item right now. And I don't think it's fair. Uh, this, that means that, uh, the item J, right after, been after the city of Fiersaw on a promise by the past administration, okay, to put a tree or a bench on behalf of the city of Fiersaw there in that place. Now, we're giving them a two-by-four, and we're beating them to the punch, and we're approving these ordinances, okay, with this policy, and then they're gonna come after, uh, after that one. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair that, you know, David promised something by City of Fiersaw by the past administration, and they've been trying to put on the agenda for the past two years. Yet, we're just giving them a second place, okay, and saying, oh, I'm sorry, we just approved a policy, and this is the way we, we got to do things now. Things should be vice versa, that we should, uh, uh, address, uh, J, then, uh, country I, and J said policies, and we don't say policies, say policies. But I don't think it's fair for item J to pay for the, for the public, for, uh, for the policy before the, but before the item.
Is it possible? I think the suggestion is, um...
I, I believe, again, I don't know all the history, but what I understood, they would, they agreed to pay for the bench. Every, we're talking, I don't know, we're talking about the cost, that were exactly would be the issue with, I, I'm, I'm assuming the cost, maybe some, some of the, some of the language of the policy. But, but I, but I understand, again, I don't know, if, I haven't so, kind of, if they have been paying for the bench. Dollar, I don't know, there is...
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna move and table this item and, and, and get back to it.
Okay. Second. All in favor of taking one of this item? Okay, motion carries. Analysis, please. Yes, ma'am. Housewoman, to the new, all right, this?
You know, board, you know.
Table. Table, okay. Okay. Here, we got a unanimous statement for table, to table this item. Okay, J, consider, discuss and consider placement for a memorial for Dennis Leal at O, Latino, Latino Art. Action item?
Motion to discuss.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, question?
Uh, Mary, counsel, uh, as mentioned, uh, family is here to discuss this, uh, the item, questions for them. I don't know the history, but we'll be in a minute. Uh, they were in the car, um, but nonetheless, they're, they're here answering questions again, about the history behind, uh, this project, or what, you know, what the idea was, but branch, and, 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 for, for memorabilia out there, or, 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 so, uh, I have a ten minute show, uh, and I know each version. Who, who's your name?
Rondelia. Rondelia?
Rondelia, yes. So I'll let them speak, or y'all have any questions for them? Um, anyway, just one of the...
Yes, sir, how can we? You have, you can speak on the behalf?
Well, I may, but...
Okay.
I know that the, the item, uh, y'all have been to City Hall and talked to our city, the former city manager as well, so, uh, and I think at times, uh, maybe a couple of times, we discussed it, but I don't think anything was ever finalized. Uh, and what we would like to know today is, you know, what discussions might be had with the former city council, uh, excuse me, with the former city manager, uh, on this process?
Well, we had, I had spoken to him a few times, and he had said he'd like to meet. All we wanted was, I mean, I know that they had to tear it down because I understand that to build a park for that, but I had asked if we could put something there, a monument, anything for him, because, you know, we always get the paint. We would do the grass, we'd always, you know, clean up our park, you know, because we put flowers, like, he, and he did tell me, you know, he was sorry that the accident happened there, and I understand that, but that's the only place, you know, since, that's the only place we have right now for him. Because due to us having his ashes, we have really nowhere. And that's what we just wanted to something, you know, there, a memory of him, a flag, anything.
Was anything ever discussed with you?
He had, no, because he had said, uh, I'll look into it, he said, I'm gonna give you some, I guess first, I guess he was gonna look somewhere to see whether you make him. And he'd get back to me, and then, well, you know, he had, I just had, like, emails where he'd get back to me. I looked at the last one, it was like twenty, what, twenty eighteen or something like that, it was the last email I got from him. And he'd have read back to me, so. I'm done, I didn't email, I figured, well, maybe nothing was gonna happen, or it couldn't happen, I didn't know, little, you know, what to expect after that.
We apologize on, on, on that, now, we were expecting something to come to the council.
Oh, okay. And he had just told us, he was gonna go back, because he was, they were, I guess, running out of, he was gonna search around, he said, because I told him, we didn't have any kids. I don't know, really, who does those kind of things or anything, that's within price range. I told him, it didn't have to be expensive, you know, you know, just something simple and nice. And then, he wrote back to us.
Do you have cross there?
Yes, we put the cross there, he had one that was made in China, and then, um, I guess if somebody wrecked into there, they made these plenty of wood across. He apologized for, you know, wrecking it to there. So, yes.
Can we, uh, look into a...
What's going with this?
A memorial, like, of some sort, or...
Or cross of the, the plaque of his name?
Tree?
Mm-hmm, I mean, that's fine, I, I don't, you know, I have a problem, I just would like something there, you know, so I could at least go back, because, I mean, we would put flowers, like I said, on his anniversary, on his birthday, and then we'd clean up. You know, because I know, back then, we had some kids that were, you know, leaving, uh, these things, but we would go clean up right away, you know, because then we, you know, just, you can imagine the things they leave out there. And we go clean it up right away, you know, and, like I said, roads get cleaned, we maintain it all the time, we didn't have to get up the city to mow it for us or anything.
Are you asking for a specific location there, the park, or just anywhere in the park?
That's... Do you want to exact, and that part is, it's gonna get, like, trampled or ran over by a car, or...
But what, what do you think, you, there, there, I don't know, some, the warehouse, or would you?
I would say, uh, maybe a little bit, or the rest of that, that's...
Now, that would work.
Yeah, so when we got, because I know what happened, it's, uh, the parking lots, you know, except there, and everything.
Would, would you, would you be open to, uh, to a paper? You know, papers, you know, document, uh...
Explain.
I'm sorry?
Explain.
A paper, papers are basically a, 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 uh, it could be a nice, I've seen them done in services, Mary, believe, it exists. So, you could do a paper, it's cheap, relatively inexpensive, still have it, easier to maintain. Uh, you could do whatever, you could, you could do, the problem with, with some of these things is, is we, I've seen some place on trees, problem is the tree dies, then, flat over there. Uh, so you have, you have some things like that you could consider. So, again, it's an idea, uh, you could, you could do whatever it is that you'd like to do, but it is, it is just suggested, so. So, anyway, that's, that's it, thank you.
Maybe you could render, um, a picture of the paper for us to look at, to see, presented to the, well, first of all, presented. Because it's, you know, presented to them, because what makes them happy, within a reasonable cost, we would comply, so I'm guessing the council would vote, since we've been at this for a while.
Yeah, I'm not expecting, I don't want it to be, like, you know, expensive or anything, I would just like something there to know, you know, it's there.
Mary, I have a...
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, uh, I think that we all, to this family, uh, we've been asking the city for the past year, but, as we have done, say, you know, not to our fault, or, uh, the past council's fault, but the past administration that we're not following through with this project. But, with that said and done, uh, know that I just finished on a personal note, I finished putting a plaque at my mom's cemetery, very own daily. And it cost me three fifty, okay, and then the bench was donated, uh, and it cost us a hundred dollars. Oh, and even three, it's like three, three, four hundred dollars. I think that total, total budget for something, a bench with a tree and a bench and a little plaque, uh, I think would be, for no more than, than eleven, two hundred dollars. And that's, that's a pretty good number. You know, uh, the bench that, that we bought, a pretty good bench, it sits two people, uh, it's just nice. And, uh, I think that we all, to this family, that, uh, we're gonna have to, to watch. And I think that, uh, we should at least, at least honor it with a, a bench and a tree and a little plaque. And the little plaque, if it's there, it, it'll be, it'll go on the, on the bench, uh, in memory of Dennis Leal.
Mary, counsel, and, and that's, I think, we could, if the council wanted to act on that tonight, all we would ask for in future meetings is we come back and make sure that, if anybody else wants to have a bench like that, we also extend that to, to future votes. Again, that's, that's the policy we want to set. Uh, or, if it gets back to its basis, maybe that's something that you want to consider, I feel, it's, I know it's, it's what you're acting on, it's not, it's not, but it's just, you may get additional requests, of course.
I, I think since we have, uh, since we have, uh, suggestions for different, uh, ways to do this, perhaps, perhaps our city manager, or city management can maybe, uh, look at, at some possibilities, and they get with the family and see what's in their thoughts.
Something within their own cost, within their own reasoning, you know?
And, and, and just try to get this done as soon as possible, because we love that.
You stay on here.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And look at the different options that have been presented today.
Yes, I mean, like I said, we, we just stopped, and when we came up in time, I was like, well, I mean, they'll get back to this bench here, and then I was like, someday, I hope, I mean.
Mary?
Yes, sir.
Uh, here, we're talking about, I don't know, say, but I would like to make a motion.
Proceed.
Right, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead, on behalf of the city of Fiersaw, honor the request on the Dennis Leal family, go ahead and place a tree, a bench, in the middle of a plaque on the bench, behalf of, uh, the city of Fiersaw to Bishop Dennis Leal. Uh, there at the corner of Medina Park, in the very corner, outside the, uh, as close to the, to the exit where it happened. Uh, for Latino World and Gallos Street.
Second.
There's a motion there.
As a motion, a second, all in favor? Councilwoman? Thinking about it, so, for the bench, the tree, and a plaque.
Thank you.
We'll work with that.
So I guess we have a couple of ceremony. Yes, and not wish, thank you. So, I don't think she cares for that. Staff report? No staff, review the bills? Give the bills a review. City councilman cards for action, for, uh, for their agendas, item? Chair, one?
Yes, ma'am. Just want to, uh, review the Pecan Street. With those stop signs.
Say that again, dear?
Uh, the Pecan Street with all the stop signs, street after street after street.
I'm thinking that.
What'd you say?
What was that?
What?
It's limited people, limited people.
Oh, 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 for the agenda?
Uh, uh.
What, what, we have asked you for?
We're not even understanding what you're saying, come on.
You want to, to see, I can get that on the front line that was taken on Pecan Street, for further review.
Ah, okay.
There's too many stop signs at the Pecan Street, is that it?
Yes.
I think the ch, chief is probably the more knowledgeable behind, but I think we, we understand what they're, I request to use. Chief will work on it.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, so that is not, need to be on there, sure.
Chief, you have, you have a traffic study done, chief, or, or, why are you gonna approach that?
I'll just tell you to pull some stop signs out.
Yeah.
Well, we, what we have to do is, is, uh, repeal the ordinance to, that, that actually allowed for those stop signs to be there, so we'd have to come back with them.
Take out a couple, and then you put them on the Apple and Medina, and the Allo Medina, and, uh...
Like, we don't have to spend any money on the other side, that's a good idea, but, uh...
We can come back with the ordinance to take those, to remove those stop signs.
Okay, any more agenda items?
So, does he need a third?
No, we don't need a third. Okay, that's, okay.
Come back with the ordinance.
Okay, so we move in, which one? Okay, moving on to general now, sir.
Mary, can we go back to the, the staff report? I, I was talking to the gentleman. Mary, I, I got a, on, on our end, uh, the building across the street, because I know the questions will come up, uh, so we'll be doing the paving. Uh, I think we have one council member that's volunteered to do the, to help us with the, uh, punch list, which is, which I'm grateful for. So we'll be doing that. I know we've been getting several calls on this COVID nineteen issue. Uh, I have been getting them, I'm sure other, maybe other council members, but...
So all we're encouraging, we're gonna do is, and we'll, we'll probably put something out, the city is just, is just to be cautious and take precaution, and, and, you know, let your guard down, we'll put something out.
Special amount.
So, so it is a, a touchy issue. Uh, we have a, a lot of meetings to get, to get to council, we have a meeting on the sixteenth. Remember, the, the justice known to be here, well, he may be calling in for a rate study for gas, and for solid waste, uh, so, so that's next Tuesday. Uh, Peter will also be working on a presentation with the chief police as far as all of the, some of the lapidic structures, particularly for fire. Uh, the buildings that are burned out because of fire, I think right now you have eight burned buildings in the city that have never been cleaned or cleared, uh, so, so we'll be giving a presentation on that. Uh, Peter will be touching on it, and we are working with people at council to see how we can start addressing those. Uh, we'll also be getting, uh, another discussion item, we, again, on the, on the solid waste. And we're, right now, we're working with the public to modify the agreement, the, the contract that we talked about. Um, and I'll be reaching out to, to, to them this week to, uh, to renegotiate those, some of those terms. I know that I have, had a call on the transfer station, we will have a, a resolution for the transfer station, uh, as far as particularly the brush, the brush issue. Uh, we have the audit, uh, Santos, the, the finance department is working on that. We hope to have this audit to you, the rate study should be done. Uh, so we're, we're tracking, uh, hopefully getting some of these bigger items done. And hopefully we can have, uh, the budget process lasting. The, some, I know the mayor won't be here, but most of the council members have agreed to be here for a retreat meeting on the twenty seventh, uh, the twenty seventh of June. That'll be a not, a meeting from nine to two, you will be getting a call from, and, and Crystal will be reaching, or she has already reached out to you for times that these, uh, this group will be reaching out to you with questions. I have a questionnaire, so, please, please help us with that, and, uh, again, we, we got a busy schedule, so, so we have a lot, go ahead, chief.
I just wanted to bring up real quick that, uh, if you guys have seen, uh, around the nation, the unrest with the police departments, I just wanted to mention to you guys that, uh, the proactive, uh, approach that we've been, uh, taking for that. Uh, we've had several, uh, department meetings on this, and I think that, I mean, this, this really goes back for us, uh, this is something that we've been sowing seeds for, for many years, and we've, uh, all the, all the events and the, the, uh, the community outreach programs that we ask you guys to fund every year, uh, this is what it's for, you know, to build that, to have this goodwill built up for times like this, so that the people know that, that we, we, we aren't here to, uh, rule over them, we, we belong to them. Uh, we work for them, we are their servants, and, uh, I just, I just wanted you guys to know that, that we are, uh, taking proactive steps and, and that, and we're not just sitting back and hoping that it doesn't come to Pierceoff. Uh, it, all it takes is one little spark, and that we're hoping that the goodwill that we have built up over the years will, will help insulate us from any type of, of problems like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. Have a question. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
This on, uh, general, general announcements. Okay, I know you may disagree with me, mayor, but without disrespect, don't get to disagree. Okay, uh, I don't like it that, how this COVID nineteen is going on, there's no notification with City of Pierceoff on the effectiveness of this COVID nineteen in the City of Pierceoff residents. And know that, uh, we've talked about it a little bit, and know about the HIPAA law, know about, you know, procedures and some of that, but, at the same time, there is this. How fair is it for GEO? And whenever the, uh, infected detained in GEO, quick to post in a Facebook and say, two more employees, or two more detainees at GEO affected, more, uh, detainees at GEO affected, detainees, employees, whatever. Yet, it comes down to citizens of Pierceoff, who, they won't give us no information. I don't think that's fair. We are very good to put, uh, GEO on the spot, and then put them on the spot and say, oh, it happened at GEO. But then, when it happens, they even can tell, then they don't give us the information, I don't think that's fair. I understand what you're saying, but like I said, whose fault is it? I know it's a lack of communication, if it's the hospital, county, or the city, wouldn't give the information. So I don't know what we're up to right now, but I know it started off a great, and then now we're leveling, and I don't know where we're at right now. So, can, can you, can you tell anything about that?
This is announcements, and the questions can be answered, because it's not part of an agenda item. So, um, GEO and HIPAA laws are different, so they can announce the detainees and amount. As far as what we can announce is very limited, so you have to wait for the report from the Texas Department of Health, so the questions answer.
That's the problem, that we have no, no communication there, not communication with the City of Pierceoff.
Uh, with the City of Pierceoff.
Yes, not with me, I'm dealing with the City of Pierceoff. Because I called Fred, and I said, Fred, have you heard about this?
No.
How Fred did you hear about this?
Well, see.
Fred, did you get a call?
No.
Well, see, that's coming from, you have to blame the, the EMS supposed to go to, I mean, uh, emergency medicine, uh, which is Ray Cal Hill. All of that information is disseminated, so, to the, from the county, so you, you, uh, not why it's not getting down to the city, I'm not sure, but I know the numbers are coming out, they are a day behind. Because what's positive today won't come out until the, the following day, so you, you have to pick that five weeks out of the county, not necessarily the city. Why, because they're not getting that information, so I'm not sure.
You.
Okay. So, what else? Motion, any more general announcement, if not, it's, um, motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, there, there.
Thank you. Time, minutes, nine twelve.